Everything is wonderful and beautiful. And wonderful and beautiful and beautiful.
These remain standing for a moment of silence for Lana Gibbs. Lana was the wife of Ed Gibbs, a former village employee and a resident of the town community theater.
Thank you. Okay, tonight is our reorganization meeting. We're going to be making some appointments tonight on different boards, different positions, and at the end we are going to be having some discussions about some pertinent village issues. So I'm just going to get started here. On a motion by trustee Char, seconded by trustee Stewart, the Village Ocean will apply to the New York Division for Youth for the establishment of a youth recreation project and subsequent matching funds pursuant to Chapter 556 of the laws of New York as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Am I doing it wrong, am I right, mate? All right. This might work out. Okay. On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, David Donovan Esquire is hereby appointed village attorney and ZBA attorney for a term of one year. On a motion by trustee Stewart, seconded by trustee Char, all in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Michael Donnelly Esquire is hereby appointed planning board attorney for a term of one year. First is by... Can I do that first? Second.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Lincoln Tully Engineering and Surveying PC is hereby appointed village engineer for the term of one year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Lincoln Tully Engineering and Surveying PC is hereby appointed village engineer for the term of one year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Margaret Strobel is hereby appointed village clerk for a term of two years.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Can we make it to life? Aye.
Aye, all right. On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Karen Coiser is hereby appointed village registrar for a term of two years.
So moved. Somebody else take your time.
I want to say I'm up second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Margaret Strobel is hereby appointed purchasing agent for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Margaret Strobel is hereby appointed records manager officer for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Sarah Goldberg is hereby appointed deputy village clerk for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Karen Coiser is hereby appointed village tax collector for a term of one year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Kimberly Katerino Manester is hereby appointed acting village justice for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Rebecca LaFares is hereby appointed to the Village Ocean Planning Board for a term of five years. The term will expire in 2016.
So moved. Second.
It's the question, so she was appointed for a partial term?
She was appointed to fill a unexpired seat.
What's that, who's on the side?
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Walsh.
Arthur Walsh.
Okay. Yep. On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Garfield Clark is hereby appointed to the Village Ocean zoning board of appeals for a term of five years. This term will expire in 2016.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Miguel Escobar is hereby appointed to the environmental review board for a term of three years. This term will expire in 2014.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Denver Maroni is hereby appointed to the environmental review board for a term of three years. This term will expire in 2014.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just to comment on the environmental review board briefly, recently there's really been a lot of momentum within the group. Debbie Maroni sent an email about a conference they want to attend. I believe three of the members will be attending that, so it's nice to see some movement there. They're definitely motivated and doing a great job, and there is no stipend for that position. So they're all volunteers working hard for the village. On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Bonnie Mayewski is hereby appointed webmaster for the Village Ocean for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, George Miller and Eugene Tucker are hereby appointed gay wardens for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Edward Connor is hereby appointed historian for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Lorraine Samstrom is hereby appointed dog warden for a term of one year.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, trustees Matthews, trustee Char, Edward Connor, Hillary Surfer, and Mark Gardulo are hereby appointed to the community carter council for a term of one year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Lynn Habbitt is hereby appointed to the village ethics board for a term of three years. This term will expire in 2014.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Francis M. Walter is hereby appointed to the village ethics board for a term of three years. This term will expire in 2014.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, the Ocean Independent and the Chronicle are hereby named official newspapers for one year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two pages left, folks. On the nomination of Mayor Roddy, Chase Bank, Private Bank, Orange County Trust Company, and M&amp;T Bank Ocean Offices are hereby named official depositories for the Village Ocean for one year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On a motion by trustee Char, seconded by trustee Matthews, village board meetings will be held on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, beginning at 7:30 PM, preceded by a work session at 7:00 PM when necessary. Village Board work sessions will be held the first and third Mondays of the month at 7:00 o'clock PM or on the fifth Monday if necessary. In the event that a work session falls on a holiday, the work session will be held the following Thursday at 7:00 PM if necessary. All in favor?
Aye.
On a motion by trustee Stewart, seconded by trustee Char, mileage for village employees shall be paid at the IRS standard prevailing rate, currently 51 cents per mile. All in favor?
Aye.
On a motion by trustee...
Matthews, okay. Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Be shy. Seconded by trustee...
The other one.
The other one. Okay. Payment in advance of audit is authorized on claims for public utility services, postage, freight, taxes, bank transfers, employee benefits, debt service, and express charges. All in favor?
Aye.
Last page. Mayor Roddy appointed the following... Do we have to vote on this at the end?
Yeah.
Or is this just a little half point? All right. Deputy Mayor, trustee Char, liaison to Department of Public Works, trustee Stewart, liaison to the Police Department, trustee Char, liaison to the Water Department, trustee Matthews, liaison to the Sewer Department, Mayor Roddy, Buildings, Grounds and Beautification, trustee Matthews, Fire Department Liaison, trustee Stewart, Joint Recreation Commission, trustee Char, Senior Center, trustee Smith, liaison to Building Department, Mayor Roddy, Commissioner of Grants, Mayor Roddy and trustee Smith, Commissioner of Finance, and just want to talk about that. That's actually something that I stole from the town board. They currently have that, and I believe Doug Blumfield actually started using that. And I think it's a good concept to have an elected official working with village staff kind of helping keep the village's financial house in order. So for the first time, we're going to be using that, and trustee Char has been kind enough to step up and fill that role. And I'm going to comment more on that when I talk about the budget. But I think that was kind of a nifty idea that Doug brought. Councilman Katerino currently has that title, I believe, and I think it's a good system, and we'll see how it works out for us. And ethics board member, Mayor Roddy. That's the official agenda that we have for tonight. I have a few things I'm going to comment on, and then last, open up any trustees want to make any comments. Today, spoke with Mike Strobel, our clerk, about our minutes formats. For work sessions, I'm going to maintain the policy where it's just board comments only. However, with public meetings, at the end of the meeting when there's public comments, currently they haven't been being written down in the minutes. That was the policy decision. And I've actually found, doing my own research, reading past minutes from past board meetings, you really get a good idea of where the public is at by reading the public comments at the end of the minutes. So we're going to be including those, at least the bridge versions from now on. You know, it's not going to be, you know, a page of comments, but you know, at least the general gist, so future mayors, future board members, and just residents can look back and find out what the sentiment of the public at the time was. So moving on, the first thing that we need to discuss tonight, and again, this is normally just a pecuniary meeting where we go through and just make the appointments, but we have a busy time right now in Village Ocean, so I'm going to ask the trustees bear with me, and we'll do a little conversing tonight on some issues. So the first thing that we need to make a decision on tonight, and it's more to be discussing because we can't take any action in a work session, but the financing of the bonds, the dirt pile, it's something that we've talked about for a few months now. And just to fill the public in, when the wastewater treatment plant was created, part of the project was excavating a large pile of dirt that was formerly a village landfill. Now it was put on 17M, the DEC is mandating that the Village Ocean move that dirt pile and dispose of it. So now we're in the process of taking that and bringing it somewhere, and we're discussing the financing. So the option that the village is left with is paying it off in seven years as a BAN or 20 years as a serial bond. And tonight, because we have our public hearing at the end of the month on raising the sewer assessment, tonight we need to make a decision so we can get the information out there to the public on what the assessment is going to be, because up until this point we haven't put an exact number on it. So I'm not sure if anyone wants to comment on this, or any thoughts?
Well, I think the philosophical question, you know, we've had our finance consultant here, Mr. Venery, several times, and I think we all understand philosophical decisions. Clearly, it's going to be much cheaper, and we're going to save a lot more interest if we do it over at the BAN over seven years. The math really becomes simple in that it's going to cost more to do it over 20 years. And the question becomes, do people want to pay more over a shorter period of time? Or, I mean, pay more over a shorter period of time or have it spread out over a longer period of time? And when we first started discussing this, I was in favor of trying to do it as short in short time as possible, but then a lot of other considerations came into play, one being that we're trying to bring on more users, we're also trying to look at other ways to get some of the money back, including selling that piece of property. And it makes it a lot more difficult for people, especially people on fixed incomes. Plus, if the shorter period of time that you do it, which is obviously a point that Joel had brought up early on that made a lot of sense to me, you're having it be paid off over a short period of time when there are some people that aren't going to be around that anymore. So I am more in favor, I'm in favor of doing it over a long period of time for those reasons.
Just to build on what you said, I'm in agreement. Another thing is right now, we have this extra capacity of the sewer plant, and if we're able to bring on new users, right now the housing market is what it is. It's not very strong, and there's not a lot of building. But it's potential that in the next few years, and probably will exceeding seven years, we're going to bring on new users. And if we're able to have those new users utilizing the plant, paying in, that will ultimately allow us to bring down the cost to the average user in the village that's paying into the bonds. But if we pay it off in the short term, a lot of our residents might not see the fruits of those labors of bringing on new users. So that's why I'm in favor. And just to put a number on it, the difference yearly, and I know I sent you the figures the other day, and you can probably, you might remember more exact than I, I should have it written down, but it's roughly $200 more per year per unit if we were to do a seven-year BAN compared to 20 years.
So it goes right up, 80 million dollars.
A lot. Yeah, 200 plus. So that's just a significant amount of money.
Eighty-five, nine eleven.
Yes. So it's a significant amount of money, on top of raising the assessment to what's going to be roughly $160 per quarter, which raises it 100% right now, to pay off this, I guess, the dirt pile, and also to fully pay off the serial bonds for the construction of the plant. So that alone at the minimum is already going to be very difficult for a lot of our residents. So I think adding to that, the extra 200...
200.
Yeah, 200.
220 something?
220. So the extra 220 on top of that additional $85 is just exorbitant for our residents. Although, if you look at it on paper, and I know, you know, our accountant, Mike Venery, isn't pushing the seven-year BAN because you'd save a substantial amount of money in the long term. However, it's, we have people right now that are struggling to get by, and I would be concerned about the people beyond the last seven years living in the village if we do that extra 200 in top of everything else. So that's why, at least my opinion is to do the long-term serial bonds, spread out as long as we can. So I'm not sure if anyone else has any other comments?
No, I mean, I'll say that originally I wanted to be a proponent of, let's just pull the Band-Aid off as quickly as possible, but once, might crunch the numbers for us, it's going to hurt it enough for every homeowner and business owner, what the new assessment's going to be. But to even add another $220 to a year, it's just difficult, and I think we're going to have to go 20 years.
And I think, you know, one thing that all of us, it isn't said that often, but we all have to pay it too. I look at it as myself, everyone sitting here obviously is going to have to pay it as well. So I look at it from what I would want to do myself as well.
I think that, you know, if we're building, I were paying, I'd love to just be able to pay and close the gap. And in fact, if you're talking penny to penny, that is of course the easiest thing to do if you have enough money to pay off the whole bill. And therein lay our problem. And not just our problem, when you're financing a job like this, that's what you end up having to do with this project. The BAN is a lovely idea for short, it's a very efficient idea for short-term money that you need to take care of a project. But this project necessitates raising the assessment so high that I think we'd have to be between 685 assessment plus your use. You're looking at quite a substantial amount of money that we have to, without question, ask of our residents and our businesses to pay. That, compared to 911 plus your use, is a significantly, significant difference for the homeowners. And therefore, I think we keep them significantly in mind when we support this concept of extending payments. I know that, I'd also like to say one more thing, that, you know, I was discussing this this evening, and one of the things that someone said to me who does not live in the village, they said, "When the electricity goes out, my pump goes out." You're fine. Village residents have water. When there is, when I have a problem with my well and had to take a new well, that cost me $10,000. If I have to put in a new field, that's going to cost you approximately $10,000. So I would love for people to be able to keep in mind the vastness of what we've done in the look into the future for instructing this, and that there is a cost, and a cost to the future. And I think another benefit is that we spread this off over the years, that new people, new residents will be coming in and sharing the responsibility of the cost of them up to the end.
But could also, actually, you hit on something that I wanted to hit on, and reminded me that part of the reason for the increase in the assessment is so that we can do the bookkeeping of the financing versus the operations and maintenance more consistently. The assessment was always meant to cover the debt. We've been having to dip into the, we're collecting, possibly collecting too much money on usage, so we may, and it's going to be explored over the next six months once this kicks into effect. I'm voting on anything here tonight or anything like that, but there's a very decent probability that we will actually be able to lower the usage rates once we get our hands around that we're collecting enough money from the assessment to the debt service. And then we might have excess from the operations and maintenance side, which is what the usage fees are intended to cover. But that's going to be, as I understood our discussions, we're going to track that over the next six months or so after the assessment is put into place and see if that is actually a reality.
And that's always a potential too, and we're all hopeful. And a lot of that's going to be contingent on our findings from our INI study that we're conducting as part of fixing our overflow zones for the DEC. So as Lincoln Tully Engineers and Department of Public Works continue to conduct that study and make certain findings, then we'll have more concrete ideas of what the cost of that is. Because making those infrastructure fixes is going to come out of our O&M side of the budget as well. So, anyone else have anything they want to add?
Well, the only other thing I guess that ought to be said is that clearly a lot of this is because of the fact that we have the problem of the dirt pile that has to be dealt with. But in going over this with Mr. Venery, it's clear that we haven't been collecting enough even in the past, because we had to borrow $483,000 this year from the general fund to put into the sewer fund, so that...
And what?
The rate itself wasn't covering, at this point, what we needed to do the operations and maintenance and the debt service.
My question would be is, what do we have on the horizon or potential other future water customers?
Well, there's a few developments being proposed in the town. We've had preliminary conversations.
So moved.
There's roughly 200 units that are in close proximity of the village that are being proposed and are in different stages of the town planning board at this point. You know, right now, you know, and there's also, by Arcadia Hills, there's Lone Oak Development, that's probably another 200 units. Outside of that, you know, it's speculative. And the housing market is what it is. You know, there's signs of improvement that we've, you know, seen, but, you know, we can't, you know, make any concrete predictions about what's going to happen. But there is a good amount of units being proposed to be built in the town, so that's encouraging.
Well, my only question, or my only reason for even kind of bringing that up is that, I mean, I think that if people have some kind of a hope, it's not a promise, but it would be a fringe benefit if, in the future, we had more sewer customers, which then there was a potential that that surcharge could be low.
Absolutely. And that's something that we're going to need to focus on as these months go on, is, you know, having meetings, and, you know, arbitration of the town is ongoing. At some point, there will be a conclusion of that, and we'll be able to move forward with, you know, either a new contract or clarity on the current one, and continue to have those conversations.
One of the possible 60 minutes too is, allegedly, Arnes is supposed to start sales through the spring or summer.
Okay.
So it's another, it's another safety.
So there's proposed developments out there, both in the village and town alike, that we are going to try to get under contract for sewer users in the future.
Because that would be, I assume, from my perspective anyway, the most environmentally safe as well as economically beneficial to the village.
Well, sure. The maple wood...
I wouldn't want to appear at that, you know, to be...
Right.
Putting everything aside, valuation still takes place, process still.
Absolutely. We'll still go through our internal processes, and I mean, for the maple wood, for example, that's behind Felician, for them to construct a package plant out, severe, you know, environmental questions. So hopefully we can get that.
Exactly my thought.
So it seems that we're all on the same page about the 20-year serial bonds at this point? Okay. Like, can we put that on the agenda for Monday's public meeting, to vote on that then? Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to move on unless anyone else has anything else?
I just want everyone to appreciate our difficult decisions this time.
Absolutely. And with, with all that, we're going to be continuing to get information out there for that. Public hearing on raising the sewer assessments, there will be a mailing going out to all the village residents. And the Wednesday prior to that, I'm going to be holding a public informational session in this building, inviting anyone, any village residents to come in, or town residents for that matter, just to learn. I'm going to be putting together a presentation about where we are right now, how we got here, what our plans are to move forward. So it has date and time, we have the date, but it's time for that, gets more concrete value put out there in the press. Okay. Today, our preliminary budget was given out to residents, and moving forward, it will be available. This budget calls for a tax increase of 15%, which, speaking for myself only, is not palatable and not acceptable to make. This budget is being given out because this is the day that we need to present it to the public, and so the public can see what we're working with. But we are going to continue to work on this budget. Ed Char is newly appointed commissioner of finance, myself, and accountant Michael Venery are going to be sitting down Thursday evening and going over this. And on top of this, you know, now this is available, I think participation is a great way to help delve into this process. And one of the concepts that I'm going to be putting forward tonight is going to be a citizens' budget advisory committee. It's something that the school district has worked very well on. This is the first year that the village is going to be doing it, recently as far as I know. So it's going to be a very rough go, and we're going to, you know, see how it works out. I am excited about it. But it's probably going to be two meetings, nothing extravagant, but if done correctly, and I'm sure it will be, it's something that we can build on next year to start it prior to this time when the preliminary's budget going out, but to start the meetings in March, or even prior for that matter, and really get participation going. The way I'd like to have it is it'll be two meetings, a village hall this Thursday and the following Thursday night, and it's open to the public, anyone's allowed to come in. They can have 100 members, you know, for all I care, but I would like to have at least six concrete members just working there so we know there are going to be people here, including two chairs. Rory Brady, village resident, he's actually here tonight, he's volunteered to be a co-chair, and not to put him on the spot, but I was wondering if Mr. Markowitz would be interested in being a co-chair in the committee as well. We can talk about later, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we'd love to have you. And I know that Emile, you're here often, we'd love to have you involved, and Mr. Andrews, he's not here tonight, but I think he'd be a perfect fit for it. So we can talk about that later. But it's open to everyone, and if the respective media outlets could let people know, that would be wonderful. So that's, I'm excited about that, because I think getting more residents, village taxpayers involved in this process can only benefit the process. And it's something, even if it's only two meetings this year, moving forward in upcoming years, to really start the process early, because I think from everything I've heard, by talking to school board members and residents alike, the school board's usage of this kind of committee has benefited greatly, to really help with the educational process, what the budget actually is, and also helping with the debt, because sometimes, you know, a village resident might teach something that someone on the board might not have seen previously, or brought something new out, and it can only benefit us. If any former wants to comment on that before I move on?
If there's an excellent idea, I'm all for it.
Okay, wonderful. Two other brief things. I've had a preliminary meeting with Doug Blumfield, town supervisor, he invited me over to his office last week. I sat down, very general meeting, we talked about some things about looking at some sewer grants, and also a concept of economic development, which I'm going to go back to in one moment, but I just want to say I really appreciate the supervisor inviting me over there. It was a very productive meeting, and I'm looking forward to more of that. The economic development concept, it's very exciting, was actually proposed by Phil Dropkin. He's the chair of the town board's ZBA, and he's also very involved in a lot of village things, very active resident of the community and the county, and Whole House of Valley for that matter. He came to with this concept of putting together a forum for economic development in the community of Ocean, both village and town alike, where there'd be a day at a time, and he's actually going to bring in people like Mike Oates, the CEO of Hudson Valley Economic Development, Maureen Halliott of the Orange County Partnership, Jonathan Drake, kind of a process, a lot of thought leaders in the Hudson Valley and our local area about ways to encourage economic development in our community. And this is going to be hopefully attended by, if we can make it, members of this board, our zoning board appeals, our planning board, our environmental review board, and anyone else for that matter that was interested in attending. So I'm excited about that, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to find out if some of the board would support, just so I can get an answer back to Phil Dropkin, if he'd be interested in attending. Sure?
Absolutely.
I think it's a great idea, you know, in a community that's half tax exempt, we need economic development. It's not a question of if, it's we need it. So any direction, I think, would be helpful. And getting everyone in the same room talking can only help, because it's, developing better relationships with people from those groups can only strengthen us.
I'm totally favor, I just wanted to stand that Phil is going to be running, organizing and running it?
Yeah, he's organizing, he's getting people in the room. And it's, you know, going to be a joint effort with the town and village, getting people there and letting our board know.
That's my next point.
So yeah, it's basically, it's an educational seminar.
And it's, it's working together.
Absolutely.
What a marvelous thing.
Yes. So I was very excited about that as well. At this point, you only get to have one first meeting as mayor, I would like to recognize my father, Key Roddy. And also my girlfriend, Jacqueline Dionne. As we move forward with the sewer stuff and budget stuff, she's going to be working hard and dealing with me, so I have to recognize that. So at this point, I'm going to open up, anyone else says anything they wanted to bring up tonight? Oh, yes, yes. Trustee Char brought a great idea forward, because in this month, we have Passover on a Monday night, there's no Monday night meeting, I believe, on the twenty-first, is it? Eighteenth. Eighteenth. So because of that, because it's such a busy month, the budget hearings, with sewer assessment hearings, I thought it'd be a good idea to have a meeting that Thursday night, just to get everyone here together before that public meeting, the public hearing. And I thought that was a great idea, and I'd like to see if the board is in favor of that.
My philosophy, if I may, true philosophy, was we're doing so much on the twenty-minute bit. We're passing over, and we can't be here, you know, we're not running the meeting, so it's just so much going on.
There's the business, we do the Thursday before that, so it would be...
The twenty-first, I guess it would be.
Because I think we all just need to have one last chance to talk with the board before one of the very critical public hearings.
And it sounds like it would count.
It's a complex of the town.
We have Monday meetings like they do sometimes. It's going to be published, because it has to be, that's what I was talking about tonight, so there's enough publication time. And I just, you know, started to follow that, and I think we all have to really have a lot to talk about, and can't miss that critical two weeks without having a chance to talk.
Right. You know, it might not be a long meeting, it might, it might be, but I think it's just important to keep the dialogue going, so I think that was a great idea. And it falls under the scenarios when you can have an emergency meeting. Not there's emergency per se, but I think all the issues really require due diligence on our part, so...
Well, you know, part of what we just passed was, if you, Monday meeting is canceled, we can only have it on the Thursday.
Right. So please, everyone's okay with that, with the board?
That's fine.
Okay. So the advertising for that will appear in this week's periodicals? Does anyone else have anything they want to...
One quick item. I've mentioned this to the mayor before. It's kind of funny that I bring this up, because everybody here knows that my wife and my two college kids are all on Facebook, and they're brilliant with all this technology. I thank my wife truly. But in my job representing municipalities all over the Hudson Valley, the internet is a huge resource to me, because I can go on the website of every village and every town, and in many of them, I can link every department in there, I can email the supervisor of Public Works, got pictures in a lot of them. I mean, there's some of them that are really over the top, but I would have to say that in the ones that, and I look at one almost every day, ours is way down on the low end. And I think as we move forward here, we need to look at it a little bit and see if we can upgrade it, because it's certainly not up to the speed of most of the other places, even in Orange County, Sullivan County, Ulster County, that I deal with every day.
I think that's a great point. Our website's definitely integrated, it serves a purpose, and this is something that Joel's actually mentioned in the past too, give it credit. I think that's a good idea. Well, what I can do is talk to Bonnie Mieski, who is our webmaster, and find out if our current server and current site is able to just be merely upgraded, and there's certain things that can be added, or if we would need to redo with an entirely new site, but have a cost associated with it, so we can do some analysis there. Because I think it's a very good idea, you know, at a minimum, to include email addresses for at least board members that would like to have them there. So, yep, I think that's a great idea, and I'll do some research on that and share my findings with the board Monday night.
Great, thank you.
So maybe if you can give a few lists of sites from municipalities you come across that you put our shiny examples, just so we can look them over internally and say, okay, we like this, we don't like that, things like that.
Great, I'll be great.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
I think it's fun to say you ran a very nice first meeting.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, before we end tonight, I just want to end on a nice little story today, and this, it's going to sound like I made it up, but I didn't. I was in Quick Stop today, getting sandwich for lunch, and I was talking to a woman who's a village resident, I'm not going to say her name, and we were talking, just having a good conversation, and in walked one of our village police officers. And we, I talked a little bit to our village police officer, this woman who I was talking to, talked to the same officer, they knew each other, he walked away. Another individual that I happen to know walked in, I said hi to him, the woman that I was talking to also knew that same individual, and walked away, and she turned to me and said, "I love living in the village." And I just thought that was just the nicest thing. So with that, I will ask for a motion to a jar.
No moves?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we're not done yet. Where are you guys?